Next three speakers will be Theda Wilson, Joshua Williams, and Larry Miller.
Good evening, my name is Theda Wilson and I'm the mother of missing child Christian Ferguson. I'm also a representative in the city of Kenlock. And you already know I have issues in Kenlock and I need your help. We were supposed to have a public meeting tonight and the government is doing what it wants to do, so I'm standing here as an advocate for the citizens in my community. The main thing I want to talk about tonight, since I have so many issues, is my son's disappearance. Everybody knows there's a cover-up in my son's case. And the same person that's supposed to prosecute the Mike Brown case is the same man that told me to my face that he knows that the father killed my son. And that he was not going to do anything about it. That's Robert McCullough, y'all. Robert McCullough. And knowing that this man is still in the way, I have a problem with that. As a mother, as an advocate, as an activist, as a leader, as a representative, I have a problem with that. And as an educator, serving children in the city of St. Louis and beyond, actually, because I'm all over the place, I really have a problem because I don't think that children are born into this world to be killed. So I need for you all to remove Robert McCullough. He even told me also that he should not even have the Christian Ferguson case. Jennifer Joyce got off the case three weeks before, three weeks into my son's disappearance, and gave the case away. You can't just do what you want to do. So yeah, I got a problem in the city, but I also have a problem in the county because you all have allowed him to hold the case. And if you didn't know about it, now you know and I'm expecting something to be done. Thank you.
First of all, I want all the tear gas victims to stand up. Now, Stinger, I got a question for you. You see all these people out here standing up? Where was you at when they got tear gas? Where was all y'all at when they got tear gas? Now where was y'all at when Michael Brown got shot down by Darren Wilson? And where is he at now? He at home in his crib chilling. But I'm gonna let y'all know, if Darren Wilson get off this case, y'all better bring on every army in the city, because it's going down. I've been locked up for two days for protesting for Mike Brown. For protesting on the streets for white. Now I want to ask this question. Everybody in the audience who's been locked up for protesting, stand up.
I've been locked up for protesting Darren Wilson.
This shouldn't happen, because people are protesting for Mike Brown. It shouldn't take two years for Darren Wilson to get locked up for a murder that's clearly is a murder. Eight times, eight bullets to this boy's body?
Two to the head.
Two to the head? That's murder. He got a taser, he got a nightclub, why he didn't use that? He used a gun on that boy because he was standing in the street. If he scared, he should have went for a daycare job, alright? If he scared, he should never took that job for a police officer. As I said, if he scared, boy go to church. But I'm gonna let you know something. I'm gonna be out here every day, and January 7th, y'all gonna see my face again. And like I said, you got to trouble clock for Bob McCullough to get down off that stand. Or else, I'm gonna make him get down off the stand. Thank you very much.
My name is Larry Miller. And I've been here for over forty years in St. Louis, and this is no surprise to me, what I'm witnessing here in St. Louis now. I moved to Chicago and I came back because of my eighty-year-old mother. But when Mike Brown got killed, it touched my heart, because it reminded me of things that I seen in the Doris Peabody and Webby projects growing up. And it was real terrific back then. We do have some issues, I don't want to sugarcoat anything. We do have some issues in the black community. It's not just because cops are killing us. We have some of our own issues. But we don't need anything extra like killer cops on the loose. So what's really going on here, the media is not here because of you guys doing business as usual. The media is here because of this case with Mike Brown. And we just want to lay some of the things down that is bothering us. We didn't want to just vent, and a lot of us are venting, but we didn't want to just vent, we just want you to know that things could have been done different. You know, transparency, you know, they could have came out and let Ms. Brown know immediately why Darren Wilson got beside himself, you know, and killed that young man like that. They thought he was a thug, they thought he was a criminal, they was hoping he was a thug, they was hoping he was a criminal. They found out he wasn't. So now, they're digging into this young man's past. They're digging into his past, they want to put him on some type of criminal background check. So let me ask you this. Let me ask you this. If Mike Brown had killed Darren Wilson... If Mike Brown had killed Darren Wilson, would there be a manhunt? Would there be a manhunt? There would be a manhunt, and we would be on the lookout and on the loose for a cop killer. So this is what they're calling out for, because they're looking for a killer cop. So there is a manhunt. They just want a little justice. They just want a little justice, that's all it is. So, that's all it is. That's all it is.
Hello. My name is Andre Anderson. Ma'am, I've been standing over there asking you peacefully, I asked the officer to even ask you, ma'am, my name is on my list.
Could you just let her call the names, please? We have to call them in order.
Nobody came in here to make...
The next three speakers will be...
I am, sir, I'm going in the order that people signed up.
We don't even know Darren Wilson's attorney's name.
The next three speakers are Rhea Willis...
If you don't, we have to be quiet so we can hear the next names.
The next three speakers are Rhea Willis, Umar Lee, and Willie May Harris.
Good evening, thank for, good evening to everybody. My name is Rhea Willis, I'm an educator, I'm a voice of the citizens and my students who got killed by law enforcement when they were innocent. So I'm standing for them as well. I have a few questions I want to ask you, and I'm gonna make it quick. First question, why were the individuals who were arrested when not ran the Miranda Rights on Wednesday, September tenth, at Seventy and Hanley? Second question, why was a visual impaired citizen arrested while attending the protest and booked while she was attending on Wednesday, September tenth, at Seventy and Hanley? Visual impaired citizen. Next question, why the citizens who were arrested on Wednesday, September tenth, at Seventy and Hanley, were not told that the law they had violated and why they were being arrested? Next question, why did law enforcement run after people and arrest them while they're on sidewalks and/or walking to their cars when they were leaving a peaceful protest and that was held on Wednesday, September tenth, at Seventy and Hanley? Next question, why were certain people pointed out based on what shirt they wore, what organization they were in, and if they had "I love Michael Brown," "Justice or Peace," they were pointed out? So my question is, why were certain people pointed out to be arrested on Wednesday, September tenth, at Seventy and Hanley? And I was one of the arrested people as well, that was sitting down there peacefully. Please, I would like those questions answered.
Jen, excuse me, wait just a minute. Jen, what names do you have next? That was Ms. Willis, we have Umar Lee, and then Willie May Harris.
My message today is for Mr. Steve Stinger, sitting over there to the left. Mr. Stinger, we know that you ran on a campaign of insurgency. It was an insurgency against North St. Louis County. We know that to get your street cred and legitimacy, you got the backing of Bob McCullough. And McCullough is who put you over. A vote for Stinger is a vote for McCullough. They are attached at the hip. If we want change in St. Louis County, we need to vote in Mike Brown. Vote in Mike Brown. We know that Steve Stinger didn't just run with the support of the South County Dixiecrats. He ran with supports of the remnants of the old North County machines of Mayor James Egan and Thorpe and the other white racist forces in North St. Louis County. They've been pushed aside. If we want a new St. Louis County, if we want a St. Louis County built on justice, if we want a St. Louis County where young men like Mike Brown don't continue to be hunted by police officers who live out in Lincoln County and St. Charles County and Warren County, we don't need Steve Stinger in office. This is the same St. Louis County that sent tear gas at children, as Tepo just stated. They came in with tanks, they occupied the old Northland Shopping Plaza like it was a military base. This is not the St. Louis County we want to live in, and if you do not want that kind of future for your children and grandchildren, vote in Mike Brown, say no to Steve Stinger.
My name is Willie May Harris. My name is Willie May Harris. And I am here to support Mike Brown, but I came here to ask other questions also. Mr. Stinger, I was at your campaign headquarters on Lindbergh Saturday, and you had me tripping, and I don't like to trip. I came to support you, but you was not there, they said you was at a parade. I really don't appreciate that. And I'm here on behalf of Berkeley. Mr. Dooley and Ms. Irby, you all support a corrupted mayor, and I really don't like that. That is Ted Hoskins. And you know he's corrupt, but yet it's still, you all support him. And I call, that's what I said, Dooley and Mrs. Irby, okay? And I don't like that, and you all campaigned on corruption, okay? Now, and I just want to say this also, I saw Jeremy Rocco on TV saying that the two weeks in the month that they've been on this Mike Brown's case, how stressed they are. I want you all to know that we've been stressed all of our lives, okay? That is why we have high blood pressure, is because you all put stress on us that is unnecessary. You all don't know the meaning of stress. Our blood is red, like you all's blood is red. We need you all to listen to us and give us a chance. Now you tell Mr. Seagan, Mr. Stinger, that he needs to call me.
The next three speakers will be Andre Anderson, Sandra Abraun, and Don Fitz.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Hey, I'm here, I want to applaud you, ma'am, I applaud you to the fullest for standing up for what you believe in is right. And the rest of you all, I don't know what to say about you, but this is what I can say, this here is a right for every individual who a convicted felony that's up in here, you got the right to vote. Long as you ain't on probation and parole, get out there and vote. I'm not telling you to put your guns up, I'm just saying, lay 'em down, pick up your pen. Pick up your pen and exercise your rights, because if you don't exercise your right, this gentleman right here, he gonna be sitting right there. And I want to say this, hey, the man already, now, let's keep it real. You got eight blacks and witnesses, then here come two whites and witnesses, so, okay, let's say for instance, you need two more. Twelve, what y'all waiting on now? For real, Jesus? Y'all want Jesus to come down and say, "This man done it?" Let's keep it real, you know, because the man already been convicted. The man already have been convicted. I'm going by the law. The law repleads allegiance to a flag of the United States of America. How can y'all respect that flag and y'all can't respect us? As individuals, as black people. We ain't got no respect. Michael Brown, Michael Brown, let him rest in peace, let him rest in peace, and the only way he can rest in peace is the culprit come to justice. That's the only way he gonna come to peace. And I'm asking y'all gentlemen, since y'all up here listening to everybody, for real, y'all up here listening to everybody, and ladies, I just want to ask one question, and seriously, how long is we gonna go through this? Because in nine eleven, everybody was the same color, they was gray, and we stuck together then, but now when it come to it being divided, y'all want to degrade us? Y'all want to look down on us? They had assault rifles on me, I was out there day one, day one. And when they had to ride gun at me, I counted three hundred officers. And this is what I want to say, ma'am, only four of them three hundred was black, I was out there. Only four. The first day I watched and counted, but all I wanted to say, I wanted to exercise and let people know, please exercise your rights. If you don't put that pen in the paper, you ain't got nothing coming. And that's real talk.
Alright, I got a couple things to address with y'all tonight. I got a, okay, I got a couple things I'm gonna address tonight. My name is Sandra Abraun, I'm here, I'm one of Mike Brown's cousins. And this is what I want to let people know, you guys need to check out this history. It was a cover-up back in nineteen sixty-two, St. Louis Police killed a black teenager and covered it up. Nineteen sixty-two, it's two thousand and fourteen, when is it gonna end? Pull McCullough off the case, forget all that, arrest Darren Wilson. He needs to be arrested. He needs to be arrested right now, probable cause. How many people need to come forward and let y'all know that this boy was, had his hands up and this police officer shot him? How many of you all up there gonna take a stand? You all represent this community, and you need to take a stand while y'all sitting up looking all googly-eyed and stuff. Take a stand, take a stand. Political corruption, that's what it is, take a stand. McCullough got so many ties to policing this community, and y'all, he ain't gonna get recused. Judges get recused because they have a personal interest in cases, but he can't get recused? That's a bunch of bull crap, and we not having it. Arrest Darren Wilson. Probable cause has been proven. Probable cause has been proven. That's right. Arrest him now. Twelve o'clock, twelve o'clock, twelve o'clock. He needs to be arrested, he needs to be arrested now. We don't need no, we don't need a grand jury. One more thing I want to address, y'all talking about a grand jury and its furnace and stuff, what kind of diversity is in three blacks and nine whites? What kind of diversity is that? Huh? Tell me, is that diversity? Does that sound like diversity to you? Do it sound like diversity to you? Arrest Darren Wilson now.
I want to thank, my name is Don Fitz, I want to thank everybody who's expressed concern about events in Ferguson. I think people would thank you even more if you actually did something about it. Now, tonight, you have the power to pass a resolution calling for the arrest of Darren Wilson, or do anything else in your legal power to have him arrested immediately. But I think that everybody's gonna walk away from this city council meeting, doing absolutely, this county council meeting, doing absolutely nothing. The second thing that you could do is you could pass a resolution calling for Bob McCullough to recuse himself and to take any legal actions which you're capable of to remove him, but I think you're gonna walk out of this county council meeting doing absolutely nothing. The third thing which you could do, is you could remember that Jay Nixon came to St. Louis County, poured his heart out with concern over Ferguson, and turned around two weeks later and allowed a black man to be executed in Jefferson City. And we know that blacks are three times as likely to be executed as whites. You could pass a resolution to call for the governor of the state of Missouri to have clemency for every person who was on death row. But you're gonna, but to do that, you would risk getting votes from the Klan. And I don't think any politician, I don't think any politician is gonna do that. So, but I think, but I think what's frightening with, is we're dealing with the fact of killer cops, but we're also dealing with the fact of killer palpitations.
We need to hear the next, we need to hear the next names.
The next three speakers are Keith Rose, Joyce Steed, and Patricia Cantor. Is Mr. Rose, is Mr. Rose here? Mr. Rose? After Mr. Rose, Mr. Steed and Ms. Cantor will be Francis Fab and Teresa Barnes.
Could you hear that? Jen, could you say that again?
The next five speakers will be Keith Rose, Joyce Steed, Patricia Cantor, Francis Fab, and Teresa Barnes.
Please line up over here.
Good evening, council people. My name is Keith Rose, I was born in Florissant but raised in Alton, Illinois. I was planning on moving to the county, to University City, next month. And I'm an educated, experienced young person, the kind of person that you're trying to attract to your region. But, but the thing is, last month, last month, I was arrested while walking out of a Chinese restaurant in Ferguson on August eleventh. I was eating with a pharmacist and we were detained for twenty-four hours. We were released with no charges. We were not told what we did wrong, because we did nothing wrong. And that was before the state came in, it was your county that arrested us. They held us there, and I was not active in the movement before that, it was only three, I mean, two days after the shooting. But you guys, you radicalize me, like you radicalize so many others out here. You have created the people who will take your jobs this month, next year, you have created your own enemies with your actions. Now, I'm wondering if I should still move into your county next month, I'm wondering if anyone will, because it seems to me like, not only am I not welcome here, oh, I'm okay with them, let them speak, let them speak. Because I believe in a democracy that does not have a pre-written list. Council people, I know you don't care about justice, but I do know you care about economics. St. Louis County, St. Louis City, and the entire region has got a reputation around the world of racism, discrimination, and intolerance. People will not be coming here, and I will be the first to put my name on the list of those who refuse to live in St. Louis County, because I will not put up with this. It was my intention to live here, and you would get my tax dollars, but now, I'm sorry, I'll keep that for myself. Shut it down.
Sir?
Madam Chair.
Sir, what's your name?
Torian Russell. So my name is Torian Russell, we're Hands Up United.
Ma'am, the next speaker is Joyce Steed.
Wait a minute.
The next speaker is Joyce Steed.
No, you have to come to the podium. Wait, did you sign up?
I did sign up, I signed up right after Tepo, we signed up together, and it's not there.
Okay, wait a minute. Zacky Baruti was after Tepo.
All I want to say, I'm gonna use this time to let my people do their rally. Hey, hey, oh, oh!
I have never attended a meeting that got this out of hand.
I agree, I appreciate you coming, but if we have another outburst where the speaker can't speak, we're going to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. What has occurred over the past last few weeks is to me, an example of the application of guilty until proven innocent. It is a tragedy when a citizen of this country feels or is worried that our elected officials or civil servants are not capable of providing the blind justice that we all deserve as citizens of this country. But as citizens, we must fight the fear that in this case, prior to the evidence supporting it, I believe that we must support in our elected officials and our civil servants until they prove that they do not deserve our trust and support. As I have observed the actions of our elected officials and civil servants, I have been embarrassed by those that demean their office and their position by assuming other elected or civil servants are incapable of executing their office or responsibility in the manner that is demanded solely for the purpose of pandering to one group or another. However, I have been encouraged by certain elected officials and civil servants who have taken pride in the unbiased execution of their office and position. These individuals have shown courage and integrity to execute what are required by our laws and not turn a very difficult situation into...
Please, please let her finish, let her finish.
And not turn a difficult situation... And not turn a difficult situation into a popularity contest. I choose to support our police and our elected officials to execute a fair and law-based resolution to a very difficult situation. I choose, I choose to assume the legal system of St. Louis County will seek law-based justice. I choose to reject outside parties from Jefferson City and our nation's capital who come to St. Louis County with a guilty until proven innocent mindset. I ask our elected officials of St. Louis County to find the courage to resolve recent events through the application of laws and not the application of appeasement.
Well, I start the clock when you get up to the podium. Well, I can't, I, good luck. Yes, who's the next speaker?
Thank you very much. My name is Francis Babb. I live in western St. Louis County, and I'm here to tell my story and request your support in passing a resolution as well as an ordinance that will help me and fellow St. Louis County residents who are facing similar issues. For the past three years, I have been fighting the city in which I live in for a building permit to install a solar energy system on my property. Eventually, I won my battle to have a building permit to install my solar, but the cost of litigating this matter was astronomical. And if I were the only person in St. Louis County having this kind of issue, it's one thing, but this issue is happening over and over again. Out in my neighborhood, Susan Handley and Brian Hoggie have experienced similar problems getting a building permit to install, getting permission to install their solar systems. So is Mitch Westler, Joe Gira, and now Teresa Barnes, who will be your next speaker. Teresa and her husband, John, are highly educated professionals. They own, they own a small business, and they were the high bidder on the house in which they purchased in Oakville. They hired a small business company to install their solar energy system, who used IBEW Local One laborers to perform the task, and now the family is being sued by their HOA to have their system removed and thrown into the landfill. Now, now Teresa is faced with the decision whether or not she even wants to live in St. Louis County because it is such a backwards community. What I'm asking you to do in my remaining couple seconds is to pass a resolution which states that, that solar energy is a position that we want to support, and to pass an ordinance which preempts homeowners associations from denying solar energy systems within St. Louis County. Thank you very much.
First, I just want to say, I actually did come here to talk about solar power and about the way that our issues have been. But I think the bigger... Thank you. I think one of the biggest issues is that we need, I mean, I don't even live in St. Louis. I actually am trying to live here. But we need to recognize the rights of our citizens. And, and, I mean, you know, I, I understand, you know, everyone has an issue to fight, but if we ignore our laws and if we allow others to infringe on our rights, then none of us have freedom in any way. So, you know, I've given, I've given to one of your council members what I came to talk about, and I think it pales in comparison to what's happening here. So, I just want to say, you know, let's keep in mind the laws of our state, the laws of our nation, and the laws of our county, and let's protect our citizens from people who are trying to in any way infringe on their rights. Thank you.
I know you can't. The next five speakers are Edward, Reer, Ramona, Dan Cook, Bruce Wayne.
Is Edward here? Edward?
Edward? My name is Eric Davis. I put Edward on the thing. But I wanted to come to speak to the St. Louis County Council tonight because we have a real, serious issue that we're facing. I am the cousin of Michael Brown. I spent many a days with Mike. Everything that they have tried to do from the onset of this trial has been a farce. First of all, the police chief released a tape of my cousin supposedly allegedly committing a crime because he said that they asked for it in sunshine laws, the press. It was later undercovered in the press that that was an outright lie. So, one question I have for all of you on this county council is, why is the chief being asked to resign? And why isn't the chief being arrested for lying and inciting riots? Number two, Mr. Stinger, you've been elected as official in this office now. You're coming, you're coming up for, you're coming up. You're coming up. You won the prelims, should I say. Now, you, you won the primary, and now we're heading for general election coming up in November. We will do everything in our power to show up on Election Day to vote, because we see you sitting up here with this smug look on your face, like we do not matter. And we do matter, and we will have our say in November when we go to vote. The next thing I would like to ask for all of you guys to do is to put together a petition to remove today Bob McCullough from this case. You have the power to do that. You should exercise your rights, just as we should exercise our rights. We're asking you to do, move, remove Bob McCullough from this case immediately.
Please bring, please bring your comments to a close. Please bring your comments to a close.
And the final thing, and the final comment that I would like to make today is, why isn't Officer Darren Wilson arrested? We have video with witnesses who had said his hands were in the air. So why is he not arrested? If I shot someone today and I was on tape and they had me on video, I would be arrested immediately. So what I'm saying is, arrest Darren Wilson.